Okay, we are now live on YouTube, so we will begin our land use public hearing. So, good morning and welcome to our land use public hearing. This hearing is taking place both in person in the Borough President's Conference Room and on our YouTube channel @QueensBP. I am Victoria Garvey and I am the Land Use Director for Borough President Richards, and I will be chairing this hearing on his behalf. For those who wish to testify virtually and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit our website at queensbp.nyc.gov. If you are attending our public hearing in person, please see our staff to sign up for public speaking time if you have not already done so. In this case, you can see me. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify in real time. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today and must be submitted or may be submitted by email to planning2, that's planning and the number 2, at queensbp.nyc.gov or by conventional mail sent to the Office of the Queens Borough President at 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226, Kew Gardens, New York 11424. Lisa, please review how this public hearing will proceed.
Good morning. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will give a description of the requested zoning action, the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have three minutes to ask questions and/or deliver testimony. Due to the length of this hearing, some questions may need to be answered at a later date. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record and if you are formally speaking as a representative or a member of a group, the calendar number or application that you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against the item. Then you may begin your testimony. Please note that a signal will ring when your time is up. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify on an alternating basis. Please note, excuse me, that if you are testifying virtually, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have technical issues, please let the staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa, and I just want to note the line about the length of this hearing. That was from a previous hearing, so this is going to be a much shorter one. So, just want to make it clear that this is not going to be a long hearing. So, thank you again. The chair, myself, reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding applications or comments. So, Lisa, if you could please call the first and only calendar item for this hearing?
Calendar item number one, ULP number 250297PCQ. The applicant is the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services. The affected community board, number three. Please, applicant, please begin.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm just gonna share my screen now. Uh, can everybody see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Colleen Alderson. I work for the New York City Parks Department, uh, part of the Environment and Planning Division. I'm the Chief of Parklands and Real Estate. I'm also joined in this, uh, public hearing by Robert Sanchez, a planning fellow, and colleagues in our Government Relations Office, Matt Jury and Gabriela Capo. Um, so I'm just gonna walk through an overview of the ULP application before you. Uh, just introduce, um, our Walk to a Park Initiative, the project background, overview of the application and what our next steps are. Uh, this, this slide is a, um, just again, the title of the ULP application, the ULP number, and this is the action, the ULP action before you is the site selection and acquisition for parks in Community Board Three, the applicant being New York City Parks, co-applicant DCASTS. And just at the outset, um, this application, um, has many properties involved, but what we're trying to do here is look for willing sellers. I'll, I'll explain this, um, more as we walk through the slides. So, just the, the project background, um, uh, this application was crafted because we know that, um, local parks are very critical parts of neighborhoods. They're essential urban infrastructure. They provide so many benefits, uh, for New York City residents. They create places for recreation, for respite. Also, they help address the climate changes that we are seeing. They create spaces to preserve and enhance the tree canopy in the city, and they serve as sponges dealing with flooding and things of that nature. Um, they also, uh, provide, uh, mental health benefits to residents, um, as a places to rest, recreate, and gather as a community. So, so many reasons why parks are important to all New York City residents. There have been many plans and policies that advocate for parks and the equitable distribution of parks throughout our, our city. There have been, you know, starting from years ago, the Plan NYC, One NYC. There is a target that we create, that we hit eighty-five percent of New Yorkers living within a walking distance of a park by 2030. Walking distance to a park is very critical, uh, because studies have shown, um, if, if they're not in a close proximity, residents don't get all the benefits that I talked about earlier in terms for their health and well-being and for a community area to, um, on behalf of a neighborhood. There also, in 2022, was the Get Stuff Built Initiative by the city that was an effort to look at the city's land use process, environmental review, and building permits, looking for efficiencies. And there was a recommendation that parks look at, uh, criteria-based triggers in appropriately defined areas to look for opportunities for land acquisition for parks. Um, there also, most recently, the Plan NYC from 2023, um, trying to create a greener and more just city, um, were big proponents and, um, many aspects behind that. For current parks initiatives, um, hopefully you've heard of this, but Vital Parks for All. It's, um, a, a plan to equitably strengthen the health environment and communities of New York City through our parks system. A large part of this is the transparency factor. There's a mapping tool that allows people to look at their communities, understand, um, park resources, and how they can compare how they weigh, um, um, their assets in compared to other areas in the city. And it also overviews the investment that we're making to restore existing park facilities, enhance the, um, and create, uh, open space. And again, that mapping tool is a very, uh, important part of this, uh, effort. Growing green spaces is one part called out in the Vital Parks Initiative. Um, the Walk to a Park Initiative that I spoke about before, trying to make sure that all residents have ready access to a, a public open space. There have been other efforts, um, uh, that have been aligned with this. We have worked cooperatively and collegi- collegially with the Department of Education to open up schoolyards. Many schoolyards are open to communities outside of school use, those jointly operated playgrounds and the schoolyards to playgrounds. There's hundreds of them open. Uh, there are still some that are not, and we continue to work towards opening up more schoolyards as, as we get the resources to do so. We've also partnered with the New York City Housing Authority, so looking at some of their assets, um, open space at their edges, uh, looking to, um, improve those spaces and then open them up to the community because those, some of those edge spaces are not open to the larger community. Just so trying to hone in where there's not sufficient open space for nearby residents. So, it's like a win-win. Uh, we're improving those spaces for nature residents and also creating new open space for, um, uh, community, the neighborhood. So, this ULP is, uh, was envisioned to confront some of the challenges we face in acquiring parks. Um, there's limited vacant, uh, land in the city. Property owners aren't aware that the city might be interested in acquiring their property and the long timeline for approval. It's upwards of two years to, you know, the pre-application and getting through the ULP application. And this really is, makes it difficult for the city to, uh, be nimble and react if there is a willing seller. Um, a lot of times, property owners aren't interested in waiting, uh, for that. And we're not able to make an offer and negotiate until we're past the ULP approval. So, we've tried to envision a new way to try to target underserved areas to create, so we have opportunities to acquire and create those new local parks. So, for this ULP, um, we're trying to basically get the ULP approval in place for some selected properties, should there be a willing seller that is interested in selling their property. So, we believe that having this ULP approval in place, um, would be helpful in trying to close the walk gap for New York City residents. Again, this is picking up on that Get Stuff Built Initiative that called for parks to pursue an application. Um, and so this way, we can have, um, instead of one individual ULP for one site, we're proactively getting approval for sites that we think might be suitable for a po- uh, neighborhood park. So, we're past the ULP, and should there be a willing seller, we can then carry out the rest of the process to be able to acquire. We believe this will, in essence, streamline the process, create more efficiencies, um, in the, for the city's ability to acquire property. So, again, back to the Walk to a Park, our goal here, um, eighty-five percent of New Yorkers living within a walking distance, the pink are the areas throughout the city that there are New Yorkers that don't have ready access to a park. We're currently at eighty-four point two percent, which sounds pretty healthy. But we still have 1.4 million unserved New Yorkers. And so, that, you know, even though the goal is eighty-five, we're almost there. We really would like to close as many gaps as we can in the unserved areas. And that's what we're aiming to do with this, with this ULP application. So, in, um, talking to the Department of City Planning, um, we determined that looking at ULP applications at the community district level was the best way to approach this. So, that being said, uh, we tried to, uh, we came up with metrics to determine which are the most underserved districts for this type of ULP application where we're trying to wa- uh, close the walk gap. So, there are a couple of criteria. One speaks to the density of the unserved areas. So, for any given community district, the more than fourteen, fifteen thousand people unserved per square mile. And then they also have to meet one of the criteria of an, a low open space ratio below 1.3. So, that number is, um, represents the amount of open space per 1,000 residents or that their poverty rate is lower, uh, is, um, higher than seventeen point nine percent. So, looking across the city for all community boards, this map shows the nineteen districts that meet that criteria. We, of course, this application is about Queens Community Board Three. Um, but there are other districts in Queens that do hit that metric. So, working with city planning, we do look towards additional applications to move forward with. So, just a snapshot on Community District Three, it's, uh, almost a hundred and eighty thousand, um, uh, residents in that area, fifty thousand, uh, New Yorkers unserved. The open space ratio is very low at point nine one. The poverty rate is also above that seventeen point nine. So, they really hit both of those, not either of them. So, some context for Community District Three, um, looking at their statement of community district needs. Um, they are requesting for more park spaces and recreational programming, and they also do have that low open space ratio that they, they face. And so, uh, they also, uh, flooding in Queens was noted. Also, they, you know, really highlighted the importance of trees. Um, so, and also, one in every five residents in the districts are eighteen and below. So, those areas of rest and, uh, uh, recreation are really critical for especially the youth in the district. So, this na- next is, um, just a map of the district showing the existing parks that, um, are, are there. And then this next map, um, shows some other, just highlighting the community gardens and those playgrounds that I spoke about earlier. So, um, these are very worthy and used spaces, but they aren't open like a regular local park. So, we're just highlighting that some of the assets in this community district are not available seven days a week as a typical neighborhood park. So, that also puts added pressure on those existing resources in the district. So, how we approach the sites for the dis- uh, for the application is, um, we have primary, uh, sites and secondary sites. So, for primary sites, uh, we looked at the Pluto Land Use Code of eleven, which is an indication of vacant property. We're looking for sites that are at least 5,000 square feet to at least create a small park, pocket park. And, uh, we also verify the sites in site visits to confirm that their suitability for a local park. And we're also checking, um, uh, to make sure that there are no, uh, permits being pursued, pursued by, um, an, an owner, you know, to develop their properties. Um, so this is one sample site of a vacant site in the district. And this next is a map showing the sites in the district that meet that primary site criteria. And you can see there's not many, um, but, uh, those are the sites that met the criteria. And then some examples of those sites. This is primary site one. This is in East Elmhurst. It's vacant slash being used for parking. Um, this next site is, um, another site, Ninety-seventh Street, similar. Vacant parking. And then this is also primary site number five. This is a portion of the Saint Mark's property. This is a, a yard space, uh, so only a portion of that site is included in our application. And then, um, because there were only so few sites that met the primary site criteria, we wanted to broaden the possibilities. So, here, we broadened up and looked at land use codes. Uh, these are developed sites, no residential uses, uh, but there's a variety of different uses in this set of properties. Commercial, industrial, uh, parking facilities. They still, we are looking for sites that at least are 5,000 square feet. Uh, we also checked that they, the configuration would allow for a local community park. We also checked, of course, the DOB permits. Two specific things with this criteria is that we looked at the, how the spaces were built, and we saw that they were built at fifty percent or less than what their zoning would allow. So, the thinking there is that they're not using them to full capacity. Maybe they might be considering a change. And so, there could be an opportunity, should they be willing to sell to the city for a park use. And the other specific thing about the secondary criteria is they have to be closing a gap. So, whereas the primary could help boost the open, the low open space ratio, the secondary, um, they have to be in one of those gap areas across the district. And here's a map, so you can see there are many other sites that met this criteria, all honed in on those, uh, pink unserved areas. So, they would help close the gap for existing residents in the district. And then some photos, um, of sites. This one is, uh, on a commercial strip on Eighty-Second Street. And then, uh, this is primary site number nine, a gas station. And then this site is pri- secondary site number thirteen on Junction Boulevard. And then, um, just a table showing the number of primary sites and secondary sites in, included in this application. We have five primary, so essentially vacant sites, and sixteen secondary for a to- total of twenty-one sites. So, just to provide some clarity, we don't envision that these, uh, there will be willing sellers across all these properties. And so, there could just be a few properties that there might be willing sellers. So, we don't envision acquiring all twenty-one sites. So, I just wanted to make that clear. And the other thing to note about the ULP application is that, um, working with city planning, we basically will have a ten-year sunset clause. So, should the application be approved, our, the city's acquisition authority for a park use would only be for ten years. So, we would only have that duration to determine if there's willing sellers and complete the acquisition process. And then this is just a snapshot on what it looks like, um, should we have a successful acquisition, um, post the ULP approval, should it be approved? So, once we identify willing seller, um, we, you know, the, the community boards have asked about, you know, wh- when will we hear from you after this? And we feel like because there are many sites included, uh, we do want to, um, let the community know that, you know, there is a potential for a new, uh, new park here, there's a willing seller. Once that's identified, DCAST plays a role in appraising the property. We will start conducting the environmental site investigation. And then, based on wanting to move forward, there's a step that, for the acquisition of property where the Parks Commissioner requests budget approval from OMB to proceed with the acquisition of property. So, that is a critical step in being able to move forward. Once that approval is in place, DCAST then, um, carries out the, um, process. They make an offer to the property owner, they negotiate. If there's a successful negotiation, it then proceeds to the contract. Once that's executed, it goes over to the Law Department for closing. Once, uh, once that happens, the property is assigned to the Parks Department, and then we would pick up on a design project for that site. So, our Capital Design Division would do that community input meeting, find out what kind of programming people would be looking for, and design the, uh, park accordingly. So, that's all the slides that we have, um, and I'll just, um, pause here. Our next step in this ULP, following the BP's, um, review, is the City Planning Commission. And after that, it will be, there's, the City Council also will review the application. They have a period of time to take a look at the application as well. Shall I stop sharing my screen?
Um, you can leave it up for now because you may want to reference the slide.
Sure, okay.
So, thank you very much. Um, I do have some follow-up questions, and, and actually, I'm going to start with a clarifying statement because this was a pretty thorough presentation. So, I just want to make sure I understand the main difference between the primary sites and the secondary sites is that the primary sites are currently vacant, whereas the secondary sites are improved with businesses and non-residential uses. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, for the sites improved with businesses, how do you imagine initial conversations would look like? I know you just showed us that flow chart, which was very helpful, but just, you know, let's, let's start at step one. Um, this, this, uh, ULP is approved, let's say, um, what do those initial conversations look like?
Well, I should have said this, but, oh, we are required to notify property, oh. Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, my screen just blipped. Um, we are required to notify all property owners before every hearing during the ULP process. So, each property owner, a part of our application, has so far received two, um, uh, letters. I have received a couple of calls, so that is, um, not from all property owners, but, um, a few property owners have contacted me with, uh, questions or they are sharing, um, maybe what plans they have for the site. So, there's been a little bit of contact by those notifications. Um, we will be requiring, required to sign, um, to provide another notification, a third letter before that City Planning Commission hearing. So, that'll be another opportunity for the owner to, you know, um, receive our letter, understand, um, the ULP application. Should the ULP application, um, be approved, I think, you know, we have ten years, which sounds like maybe a lot of time, but it's not really. So, we would like to, um, you know, continue our outreach to property owners, um, using, um, the official addresses and contact information in the city system. We are getting a little bit of more precise information from owners that do reach out, phone numbers, or if it was a company name, who the person is, uh, representing the company. So, we hope to continue the outreach and dialogue to see if, should there be any interest from property owners. So, um, you know, so we'll see, you know, how the ULP goes, and then continuing to follow up. Probably once or twice a year, we want to do more outreach to the property owners, just to take a temperature. And if they tell us we're not, that, you know, they're not interested, they have other plans, you know, we'll take note of it. We might check in just to make sure, sometimes plans change. We'll keep watch of the DOB permits to see if anyone has just proceeded to pull a permit to build or something of that nature. And one other thing I just want to say in our conversations with city planning is that if any of the sites don't meet the criteria as spelled out in the application, they are not authorized for the city to acquire. So, if a property owner builds something, um, they no longer meet that secondary criteria, we are not permitted to even pursue an acquisition. So, we really have to keep track of these properties, you know, what the property owners are doing, and, um, you know, understand where there might be opportunities and where there will not be opportunities.
Okay, great. Um, and then, you know, with these primary, primary and secondary sites, is there, do you mind discussing any projected costs of acquiring? I know there has to be appraisals done, so I know that that's like very, um, market-based, location-based, but, um, it seems like primary sites would be easier to acquire based on the fact that they are vacant. I just wanted to ask a little bit about costs since we're talking about twenty-one total sites, which would be ideal, um, to have that much park and open space. But is that fea- is that feasible? Is that, um, something that OMB would be empowered to approve?
Um, we do have some capital funds now in our budget for this cause. Um, it would not be enough for the acquisition and development of all twenty-one sites. We don't envision all twenty-one sites being part of the, uh, you know, what would be realized, um, just by the nature of the properties and what the property owners aim to do. We have done some analysis in terms of the, um, metrics of how we selected the community districts. How many sites would we need to acquire to meet the thresholds where they wouldn't meet the metric anymore? And it depends on the sites, so where they're located. Um, so, you know, it could be that two or three sites closes the metric in a good enough spot that it wouldn't be, meet our criteria. So, but, you know, some of the sites that might close the gap for the largest amount of people may not have a willing seller. So, we might have to acquire a few more sites to meet the metric. On cost, it is totally dependent on the site, the location. Some of these sites are smaller, you know, again, they're close to that fifty, five thousand square foot minimum. Some sites, uh, there's one site that's, um, about almost two acres. Some sites, there's one site that's about almost two acres. And I shall say, for the larger sites, it could be that a property owner maybe has plans for their property, but maybe they want to subdivide. And maybe it creates a window for the city to acquire to hit that five thousand square foot minimum. So they might have other plans, but we could purchase. But, you know, across the city in all five boroughs, it is totally dependent on, on the appraisal. We've purchased lots smaller than five thousand square, square feet for a couple hundred thousand dollars. But sometimes a small site can also be appraised at a pretty healthy number. That might be a million or two million dollars. So it's totally depends on the appraisal, the market, the size of the property, the location. Is it a corner lot? Is it a mid, you know, there's a lot of factors involved. Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate you, excuse me, I appreciate you kind of walking us through that in a general sense. I realize that it's going to be different, it's going to be a case-by-case scenario, but it's just helpful to understand just generally the costs associated. And then my last question, I think you mostly addressed it in your presentation, I just want to call it out. So Community Board Three conditionally approved this application. And actually, they only gave their approval for a few of the sites based on the fact that these properties were already improved with businesses. But I just want to speak to their conditions. With, one of their conditions was that parks must meet with Board Three within ninety days to present their proposed plans for the acquired property. I realize that may or may not align with the flow chart that you had displayed earlier. So could you just speak to if that is, if you could meet that ninety-day baseline for the community board?
Yes, I think it's stipulation number three. And there's also one that speaks to presenting our proposed plan for the acquired property. I mean, certainly within ninety days of acquiring a property, we could certainly meet with the community board, let them know that we've acquired a piece of property, and what is our plan going forward to carry out a capital project? And I should say, for the funds that we have, we don't want to just have the capital funds to acquire, but also develop. We don't want to just, you know, have a fenced-off vacant lot. We want to be able to follow through to create that open space. So within ninety days, it's totally possible and feasible for the Parks Department, the Planning Office, to meet with the community board, share, you know, more specifics on the site, what our plan is to carry out the capital design process. It's a very important part of the agency's work that we do community input meetings. We can walk through that capital design process. So there's design, procurement, and construction. We could certainly review our plan to move forward. Once the city's acquired the property, we can lay out that plan. And we, we might have an idea of when that community input session might even be, to share that. So there's awareness for the input on what kind of programming would you like to see here? Are you looking for more passive uses? Are you looking for a playground? Are you looking for whatever it might be? Because that's really critical for our designers to design and carry out the park that meets the needs of the local residents. So I think we could do that. We could share what our plans are in that implementation phase to, to create that park.
Okay, great. That's, that sounds like some good community-led planning, which we always love to hear. So at this point, we could move into public testimony. I just want to ask Sola, is there anybody on the Zoom that's registered, attendee or anything like that?
No, there's no one that's registered.
Okay. And no one has signed up to speak. There are two folks here in person. I'd like to just open the floor. Does anyone have any comments or questions? All right, great. So seeing as there are no, there is no formal public testimony, I'm going to go ahead and close this item. And I'm actually also going to close out this hearing as this is the only item. So our next scheduled hybrid land use public hearing is Thursday, September eighteenth, starting at nine thirty a.m. And thank you so much for joining us today. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.